Welcome to the Thursday, June 29, 2023 Myersburg City School District Regular Meeting. If everyone would please look right for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The district's mission is to foster a positive, nurturing, and safe environment to inspire and support ongoing learning in the development of individuals as productive members of our society. We must be able to conduct our meetings in an orderly fashion. Our expectations at all board meeting is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. In the event that anyone is disruptive and interferes with the meeting, they will be asked to leave. They do not leave, we will request that law enforcement assist them in the process. As a reminder, as a reminder, our expectations at all board meeting is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully, we will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. And if at any time you choose to address somebody, if you have a green sheet, which I have none to this point, if you wanted to speak, you would not address a single board member but the board as a whole, okay? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Amsler.
Here.
Mr. Daffler.
Here.
Mrs. Skeeter.
Here.
Mrs. Nice.
Here.
Mr. Toadvine.
Present.
Dr. Blessing.
Present.
Mr. Holman.
Here.
Okay. Everyone's here, good. We are going to have some presenters this evening, so if you do have your cell phones with you, if you wouldn't mind putting them on hold for a little bit, we appreciate it. adopted the agenda. It is recommended that we approve the agenda for June 29, 2023. D. Approval of the minutes for the regular board meeting held on May 18 of 2023 and the minutes for special board meetings and work sessions held on May 31, 2023. Item E. Approval of the financial reports dated May 31 of 2023. Going to item F, and I will turn this over to Dr. Blessing and to Mrs. Nice for the recognition of citizen staff and students.
Okay, sorry, this is a little disorganized here.
There are a lot of stuff tonight, so.
Every year, we nominate, we try to nominate businesses, four businesses, and also, a few times, we've nominated what we call a special project. And for our special project, we nominated all of the churches that help our school. And a lot of those churches are a member of the Hope for Myamisburg, and that's, they're under the umbrella of the Miami Valley Leadership Foundation. So our first honoree is, and he has to leave right away, so we understand that, is Grunder Landscaping. And here to represent Grunder Landscaping is the CEO and the founder of Grunder Landscaping, Marty Grunder. And I wanted to say just a little bit first about, yeah, and Marty, can I just say one thing? Basically, they have landscaped our athletic student entrance at Myamisburg High School. It's absolutely, absolutely beautiful, and it's valued at $25,000. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Nice, appreciate this. And I just want to say real quick, our business has been located in Myamisburg for 30 years now. It's a tremendous community to be a part of, and I'm very proud to run a business in Grunder. While it may seem like I'm doing something really nice by doing that, I have an ulterior motive in what we're doing. Has the son of a eighth grade English teacher and the husband of Lisa that retired recently from teaching, where she got her career started here, taught with Mrs. Nice at Kinder Elementary, I certainly know the value of education, and it's very, very important. And I think there is a lot of challenges that we have, certainly in our world and business and school and everything else, but if we stand on the sidelines and don't do anything about it, don't put time, which actually I think is more important than money, into things, we're not going to get better. Thanks to this gentleman up here, one of my best clients, Zach, Joe Zakovich, we're doing some things. Thank you, Dr. Blessing, for your support for what we're doing with a opportunity to introduce landscaping to other young people, because we have great opportunities at Grunder Landscaping, there's great opportunities in the industry, and you're helping us create awareness. So I thank all of you for what you're doing. Education matters. As a trustee at Wright State University, I've learned firsthand the value of higher education out there, and while Wright State isn't for everyone, it gives a tremendous amount of young people an opportunity to further their education, but a lot of that is rooted in the good work that all of you do. So I want to thank you, and while I may look like a nice guy, I, we've, we've got to change, and we all have to get involved. If everyone would just get involved, I think a lot of these problems could be solved. And I know a board position is an extremely high-paid position, but on a serious note, I thank you for all you're doing, because that's what's going to make a difference when we take the time to show up. So thank you, and thank you, Zach.
Can we get a picture?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Marty.
Absolutely.
Okay, next we have for our, one of our four business awards is Myamisburg Vision Care, and we have Keith Bassinger, the Doctor of Optometry here. And he had, they basically renewed their $25,000 five-year commitment to our district. They've done this multiple times now, and it's appreciated, and they do have their name up on the scoreboard, and we appreciate everything that you do for our district. So if you want to say anything, feel free.
I'm not, I'm a speaker, so.
On behalf of the Board of Education in the district, we appreciate your partnership, and I think they want to get a better picture.
Yeah.
Do we have to turn, let's see if it's turned a little bit? It's not everyone.
You're good.
Do you guys need chairs? Okay, I want to make sure. Thank you.
The other two.
Ian, can I say something?
Oh, sure, of course.
Dr. Bassinger.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, who's going to finish out your five years, since I know you're really getting old, and you're probably going to be retiring real soon, so.
I'm not medical.
No, I know. He's my guy, he's my guy, so.
Mine, too. He's a good one.
And Ian, thank you. A little bit of advertisement for you. I had what I considered a pretty big problem with my eye, and he sent me to the right people, and I can see now. So that's, that's good. That's what happens when you get old, I guess. Really old kids, really.
The other two businesses, one is Jane's on Main. They held an emergency student fund for immediate needs such as paying for medication or any other medical need, safe housing, transportation to and from appointments, food, shoes, clothing, and then it was administered by the Kinder Student Assistance Program. And Bennett's Restaurants also helped with these donations. So thank you, Jane's on Main. We will bring any, anyone that's not here tonight, I'll make sure they get their certificate. And then the last business is Chuck E. Cheese. They, for Bower School, they provided a free family pass each month. They donated pizza for all honor lunches. They did two give-back school nights, and that was all for Bower School. So next, we have our churches, and I just want to say a little bit about what they have done. Their congregations, like I said, work under, mostly under the umbrella of Hope for Myamisburg. Some, some don't, there's a few that are separate. And so they meet every month with Sarah Pelfrey, and they continue to help our students and staff in many ways. Blessings in a Bag, which has been done for a long time, it's food for the weekend for kids that need food, school supplies and backpacks for any child that need those. They paid $5,000 worth of school lunch fees, a coffee and tea bar for Kinder Staff, Thanksgiving meals for 25 families, and they provided transportation for those who could not pick the meals up, Kroger gift cards for families who needed food for Christmas, no, they just needed food, and adopt a family program for Christmas, special shopping experiences for 20 children, mentoring, the mentoring's a big piece, safe centers during COVID where kids could do their online learning, and also food distribution during COVID, that was a big one, too. These churches just, it was amazing, the kind of things that they did for our school district. Also, just various school materials as well. And the ones that we have here tonight, we have a lot of churches, but the ones that are here to get their certificates, I'm not sure, is Susan Luke in here? Okay, oh, hi, Susan. Yeah, so first we'll have Susan come up, she represents Parkview Church. And if you want to say something, you're welcome to.
I didn't mention that.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess the letter did it.
We appreciate your partnership and support of our students. Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure. We love having interaction with the students, and I guess I did say something there.
Yeah.
Picture, picture. I have very important instructions from Brandon.
Do you have a knowledge of certain populations or communities?
I would say we have worked some special with Mooned, and then besides that, we've done the playground apart that's nearby, and can I tell you, during COVID, the having hosting the kids that didn't have any parents or parent home was so fun. It was so fun, and we, and they had it all spread out, all over the building, and we had volunteers in there. It was, it was incredible.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
And then next, we have Brian Kent from St. John's Lutheran.
Thank you.
Brian, are you the pastor there?
I'm the president of the congregation.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
They'd like us to talk, they might.
Yeah, that's fine.
For everyone who comes next, we're going to, or else we get this little note from the TV station, so.
Well, thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank the board for this recognition. A lot of times, as you indicated, the churches fly under the radar. St. John's Lutheran is the second oldest recognized church, organized church in the state of Ohio, we're a year older than the city of Myamisburg. And our ministry, of course, to the schools has been through the backpack program. We adopt the holiday families, usually multiples, we've had it's one point up to 10 in the past. But we also are active in supporting the food bank, which is in direct support to the students coming in. In addition, we also support three substance abuse groups at our congregation, while not directly involved in the actual Myamisburg school, we also are well aware that some of these individuals that are under that ministry are struggling with those issues and have school-aged kids, so it's very important. I'd also like to point out, we were the only church that remained open throughout COVID for those substance abuse group in the entire Miami Valley, so we never closed our doors. We also support multiple Girl Scout troops in our congregation, which also provides some of that leadership building. So we're delighted to be recognized with this, and we look forward to a continued relationship with the City School District of Myamisburg, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Myamisburg Christian Church, and representing Myamisburg Christian Church is Michelle Osmansky. Did I pronounce that right? Osmansky. Okay, can you say it?
Osmansky.
Osmansky, okay.
Let's get a picture, and then I'm talking to the microphone, that'd be wonderful. Well, thank you so much. Thank you so much. We appreciate it so much. And your happy safety boards.
Wonderful, I wasn't prepared, too.
Thank you very much for this honor. Myamisburg Christian Church loves being able to, to serve our schools and our community with open arms. We love the children, and just being able to go out and to love on families and to reach them is a joy. And many of our congregations have participated in so many of the different programs that you were referring to, and so we hope and look forward to doing that again in the future. So thank you for recognizing us, we appreciate it very much.
And then next, we have Sarah Pelfrey here, she's the Hope for Myamisburg Director, Community Specialist, and she's not only here for Hope for Myamisburg, but also for the Green House Church. So if you want to come up, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you. You could talk all night about these great programs, so if you want to hold that one and hold this one, how's that sound?
Her husband is the pastor or minister of Green House Church.
All right, well, this just makes me happy, because I love our schools and I love our churches in our community, and I truly believe that although it sounds cliche that we're better together, and it has been an honor and privilege to watch just so many different churches and community members in our schools, in our city, saying, yes, let's work together to meet the needs of our kids and of our families and of our community as a whole. So I'm absolutely honored, thank you for recognizing just the ways that we work together. But really, I think for me, it is a big applause to all of the different churches, the school, and the community as a whole, because really, just one of us, we can't do it on our own. So, thank you.
That's my baby girl.
She's a good one. Next, we have the First Church of God, and we have Daniel Kelsey. Is that Craig Kelsey? Here to?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much. Your partnership. There we go, we get another picture here. Do we play Mr. Holman?
You're good.
Do you want to say a few words?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think I would just echo a lot of what the other churches and community leaders have said, we're, we're incredibly blessed and grateful to be able to partner with you guys on the school board and to partner with the schools here in Myamisburg as well. It's been a really neat opportunity for us to work together with you guys in caring for the next generation, trying to raise up that next generation of leaders here in Myamisburg, and also caring for those in need. So we've, we've really, I know a couple of the ways that we've helped out are through the school supply drive, as well as supporting some families with gifts at Christmas each year. And then personally, I've had the chance to, to work with a student through the mentoring program at the middle school for, for just over a year now, and it's been really cool to see, for me personally, the way that that relationship has grown over the last year. So thank you for all that you guys are doing, and we're grateful and happy to be able to partner together with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then next, we have from St. Jacobs Lutheran is Mike Haupt, and I didn't recognize you, and you're retired tonight, at least you being in other clothes at our meeting.
Riding a one-wheel bicycle.
Yeah.
He's on his tractor, he's on my.
I know.
Well, we are better together. Thank you, everybody, for working together, it means, means a lot to work together with a group. One thing I've started getting involved with is a 69-and-over softball league, they play on Friday mornings. It's very interesting, but it, you can't, you can't understand how important it is as a team to work together until you're working with a bunch of people that are mostly 70s and 80s, and it's just amazing. And you can't, you know, home run doesn't win it. Takes a lot from a lot of people. So many thanks for, for all the churches, and we've been involved, especially with Blessings in a Bag, and we have Thanksgiving meal every year, and that's been going on, so many thanks to all the people who've helped out with that, and we have a food pantry, so that's just a little bit of our work, and thank you, board, all your work. Thank you.
Are there any churches here that I didn't recognize? Well, I just want to quickly say the other churches were Myamisburg Assembly of God, Life Point Church, Trinity Church, St. James Church, Miami Valley Church, Journey Church, that's all Parkview on Fifth Street, Southbrook City Lights, just kind of stick together, the Myamisburg Seventh Day Adventist Church, I'm sorry, I'm not getting it right tonight, and the Pinnacle Point Church. So thank you to all the churches, you make a big difference, you're really the icing on the cake for our district, we couldn't do it without you.
Okay, yeah, thank you from the, from all the board members and all the, especially the children in school, you know, that's, that's what it's all about, are the kids. And it's, it's amazing to go watch the smiles on their faces when they get handed, you know, that bag full of all those wonderful things, you know, pencils and grasers and just everything that they're going to need, and, you know, I, I've been on the board a long time, and that program, to watch how they, it grew into where the kids were getting what they actually needed, because the teachers would begin telling the churches and everything, this is what we need, instead of getting things that just sit in the corner, you know? And what a blessing that, you know, all this is, Blessings in a Bag, all of it, so thank you to all you churches and individuals that do so much, you know? Next, we'll go to the board discussion, and the first presenter will be Masters Insurance.
This is the exciting part, everyone's all excited about the insurance piece, I'm sure. My name is Angie Engelke, I'm with Masters Insurance, Lisa Tinnell is with me today. We appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with all of you. Obviously, the insurance piece is a very big cost for the district, we want you to know that we are stewards of, of the district, we spend quite, look, everyone's leaving, is it me? I'm only kidding. And we, you know, the, the mark, we know everything's gotten more expensive, right? You go to Kroger, and, and milk is expensive, and eggs, and if you own property in a business, you know that the costs are going up. So we work very hard, Myamisburg is one of three districts that we take care of from an insurance perspective at the agency, so we work very hard and make sure we go out to market to tap into every opportunity for not just savings, but also the best coverage, so that you guys are taken care of as a board, the district is taking care of, if there are any issues, we know that you're all are protected. That's, that's our job, and that's, that's what we're here to do. So this year, we did go out to market across the board, we did land on, with the team, we agreed that the incumbent, the carrier that you've been with, that's who we're presenting today. We are looking at an increase, so we will talk about that, but we decided after going through, we went to Liberty Mutual, who you all were insured with for some time, we went there first. They are, they're a little bit crazy from a rate perspective, so we went out to another new program that's new in the state, that's kind of very highly recommended, their rates were, were very high, so we, we passed on that one to give them another year to get comfortable in the state of Ohio. So what we're presenting today again is the Trident Argonaut program, you've been there for five years, we've had really good claims experience, the way things have been handled has been, we've got a lot of positive feedback on that, that's the first thing we look for, and we have had some claims that have been a little bit painful, sorry. So anytime we have that positive claims feedback, we feel good about where we are, because if we're not taking care of claims, and you guys don't feel like you have a voice and, and feel good and settled when things go wrong, then we're not doing our job. So, so we won't go through, I know you got, y'all have a hard copy in front of you, we don't have to go into too much granular detail, there hasn't been much of a change in coverage. So as we look at the limits in the first few pages, you're not going to see any changes from what we presented last year. So if we want to go on to the next one.
I will catch up with you.
Okay, all right, great. So those of you with hard copies, you'll see on the second page, this is just telling you who your service team is, me, I'm Angie Engelke, I'm the general manager at Masters, so I'm responsible for all the things that go right and mostly that go wrong, come to me, so you all are welcome to reach out to me anytime. Nicole Mogher, who lives in the, the fine area of Johnstown, is, also works with us on your account, she presented along with Lisa and I to the team last week and works on your account throughout the year. And then, of course, everyone knows Lisa Tinnell, who pretty much holds everything together all the time. So that's your team, and that's just a little bit about the agency, so we can move on to the next page. This is important and worthy of its own page, because the named insured on the policy is the only entity that's able to, to reach out, communicate, take advantage of anything with regards to the policy, so we always just include that for legal purposes. The next page is your general liability page, so this is what covers you for products liability, premises liability, people slip and fall, that kind of thing. Limits are the same as they were last year, we've got a million per occurrence for bodily injury, personal injury, you've got 100,000 in premises rented to you damage, and then, of course, a general aggregate of $3 million, so that means all year for all liability claims, you have a $3 million aggregate there. You also have employee benefit liability, that is $1 million, so if you were to leave somebody, leave a staff member off of your benefits or not remove them, that's what that coverage is there for. Bumping down to the additional coverage is there at the bottom of the page, you have 100,000 in school violence response, we talked a little bit about this last year, this is kind of a build-in of 100,000, so that's going to cover largely property damage, so if there were a violent event taking place on school property, you'd have 100,000 in coverage there. We do offer to all of our districts and any of our commercial accounts that have a lot of people in one place, we do offer workplace violence coverage, so we're more than happy to put a quote together for you all, if you'd like to take a look at that. And you hate even talking about it, because it's the worst-case scenario of things, but we know that it happens a lot. So where this school violent event is going to cover the property damage, a full workplace violence or active shooter policy would cover the district for liability, it would cover if you had to reconstruct a building, it would cover bodily injury, any therapy, anything that you'd have to, costs that you'd have to endure be found liable for should a violent event occur. So we can take a look at that if you all want. Full disclosure, a district of this size, the policy would probably run around 15,000 a year, it's a big number. We, our other two districts that we write do carry the coverage, so we can certainly talk about it, get you more information, if that's something you all want to take a look at, okay? We've got a little bit of drone cover.
Excuse me, is the, is the, we have the additional coverages, is that considered an umbrella policy?
No, the umbrella policy, and we'll, that, that has its own special page, but the umbrella policy is the additional million, 5 million, that sits over top of your general liability and all of your other liability coverages.
Okay, so if there were a violent occurrence, and we use, say, the first million, or whatever, you know. that's as far as what you call the additional coverage here, the liability coverage, then we would have the sum of all three of those?
No, violent event is its own, it's its own coverage. So, all that we have at this time is the hundred thousand and the violent event that's shown here on that first line.
Well, I'm talking about as it says additional coverages. Well, you got it under that.
Yeah.
Yeah, liability coverage, additional coverages.
Yeah, that's just saying these are extra throw-ins that are included in the policy. So, the violent event is its own, it's its own coverage. So, the umbrella does not sit over top of the violent event.
I think you're misunderstanding my question.
Okay.
If there is an occurrence, okay, the, this page that we're looking at right now, before we go forward.
Yep.
Okay, if all those funds were needed, then the umbrella could kick in.
Not for a violent event.
Okay, so you're going to tell us what the umbrella will cover then?
Absolutely, yeah. The umbrella will sit over, it sits over everything on this top section. So, your bodily injury and property damage, personal injury, products liability, employee benefit liability. And this is all listed when we get to the umbrella page. We'll have everything listed. But the violent event is just a little bell and whistle that they throw in there that really just doesn't cover a whole lot.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it as the whole additional coverage, the whole liability coverage. And, you know, I have an umbrella policy myself with you guys, as a matter of fact. And, you know, this is quite a lot, would be quite a bit more than what, you know, I hopefully would ever need.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's why I was asking the question is because when you start having something that's, a bomb going off, for example, you know, something like that, you're talking about a lot of damage to human beings and buildings.
Yeah.
You know, so it'd be nice to know how that's going to kick in.
Yeah, and it, and your, all you have in your policy for those violent events, because they're criminal acts, is just this hundred thousand that's shown here. The umbrella and your regular general liability limits don't cover that because it's a criminal act. So, they throw in that hundred thousand, but really, it just doesn't cover much.
Not even one person?
Unfortunately, no, it doesn't. And it doesn't cover, you know, what we all know occurs after that fact, which is all of the psychological damage, all the things that you have to do as a district. You have, you have a lot of media issues you have to deal with. You have staff issues. There's a lot to it. So, that's why it's a separate product and we can certainly take a look at it if you all would like to. Okay? Okay. You've got any other questions on that? Okay. So, you had a little bit of drone coverage because most folks are flying a drone around these days and that's typically excluded in the policy because it's an aircraft. You have an additional insured, which covers all of your students that are doing internships or practicums or teaching programs. That's thrown in. You've got a little bit of pollution. So, if there, if you have a chemical spill in science class, you've got cleanup for that. You've got some corporal punishment coverage. We're covering the school doctors and nurses for professional liability. And then, the sexual abuse or molestation. You have a million dollars in coverage for that, which is what you've always carried. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay. You guys are like, no, let's go. We have eighty-seven pages. Okay. Next, we have the educators' legal liability coverage. This is a million dollars. This is an area where we're seeing a lot of claims these days. So, we were expecting a big increase here. We didn't see it, so we're very grateful for that. That gives you a million dollars per wrongful act and you have three million annual aggregate there. Any questions on that at all, educators' legal? Okay, next is employment practices liability. So, this is your sexual harassment, wrongful termination kind of coverage. You've got a million dollars there as well as a three million dollar annual aggregate as well. So, got that. We're also covering the non-monetary defense. Got some EEOC coverage there. Just all common things. It's the stuff you've always carried. Nothing outstanding there. And then, the law enforcement liability, your program does include that. We are starting to see the market pull back on this coverage. Not every carrier offers it. So, we were able to secure coverage you've always carried there, which again is a million per wrongful act with the three million dollar aggregate. The five thousand dollar deductible. Any questions? I haven't had a lot of caffeine, but I feel like I'm talking really fast. Am I doing okay? Okay. All right. Next is the commercial auto. So, this is all of your buses, all of your box trucks, all of your pickup trucks, all those things. So, we've got the schedule there, which, you know, you guys probably don't care about at a very granular level. Last year, we did take the deductible here up to five thousand dollars, so we could save some money on the premium there. Those changes that we made last year on the deductible that the team made really saved us a lot this year in terms of claims and that frequency. Districts are taking a hit. All municipalities are taking a hit because you got a lot of property, a lot of vehicles on the road. So, those changes really were impactful this year in our ability to secure our program for you. So, you've got a million dollars in liability on your auto coverage. No deductible applies to your liability. You've got uninsured motorists. So, if somebody who doesn't have insurance hits one of our vehicles, we've got a million dollars in coverage there. And also a million in underinsured. So, if somebody hits you and they've got state minimum, you've got a buffer there to fill in. Okay? Questions? Okay, we're going to skip a lot of pages through the auto schedule. And then, we'll get to the property, which is a big chunk of what we've got here. We're looking at two hundred and fifteen million and some change in building coverage. So, that's all of your buildings together. That is blanketed. So, you've got some room for error there. If you've got a little bit more in one building than maybe we had scheduled, you've got some buffer there. We've got seventeen million and some change in your contents. So, that's all the stuff that floats around building to building, not permanently attached, for a total insured value of two hundred and thirty-two million and some change. The market really starts to get nervous these days at right around two hundred million. So, that, that really is what pushed us to go to market hard this year because when you hit that two hundred million, you get north of that, carriers get very nervous. Their reinsurance contracts get very expensive once you get past two hundred million. So, the benefit with this district is you guys are, we're really spread out. So, you know, a lot of smaller districts, you've got buildings all in one place that are subject to big loss. We're spread out. We've got buildings here, there, not a lot of concentration in one spot. So, that helps us be able to provide some solid coverage there. We've got a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. We mentioned last year we took that up, so that was very helpful. We've got a million in earthquake, a million in flood, and we've got some equipment breakdown at a hundred million as well. We've got a little bit of pollutant cleanup and removal and spoilage. Spoilages, if you have food, electricity goes out, all the food goes bad. We've got half a million dollars in coverage there with a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. Questions? Okay. You guys are like, get to the, get to the premium.
What's the, I know Nationwide is almost boycotting Ohio. Why? What's the reasons for the insurance companies doing that to the state of, you know, businesses and stuff?
So, so the nationals like Nationwide, State Farm, Allstate are pulling out of some states totally. States like Florida, Texas, California, they're pulling out altogether. In Ohio, we have a big concentration of property here. We have a lot of old property. I've not heard that they're pulling out of the state. I know we write with Nationwide and they're non-renewing a lot of our business. And they're non-renewing it just based on class. So, you know, every company, like every business, their costs are up and they're trying to price appropriately, but when it costs, you know, when you go and get your car fixed and it takes six weeks instead of two and the parts cost five times what they cost last year, companies just can't keep up. So, depending on how much concentration they have in any given state, they may have to retract. I mentioned reinsurance. Are you guys familiar with reinsurance? So, that's what companies like Nationwide have to buy when they get past what they can retain themselves. So, every company, every insurance company has to buy reinsurance. So, it sounds a little bit, you know, like a, like a, what's the word I'm looking for? Like, it doesn't all make sense, but that's the way, that's the way it is.
Especially when they're covering themselves with their own insurance. That really doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, and most of them don't. I mean, most, most insurance companies, some do self-insure, but most of them are insured by other insurance companies, oddly enough. And it just always goes back to capacity. The bigger the company, the more capacity. Nationwide, even though they're headquartered in Ohio, just, they're just not doing well. And I think they went from the captive model where they had agents who only sold Nationwide to the independent model, which is what Lisa and I are, where we have several different options to choose from, so you can kind of shift things around.
I know they were, their average was going to be like a thirty-eight percent increase.
Yeah.
I was at a, it's funny because I was at an insurance meeting this morning for my business, you know, and they had a presentation by an individual, that's what they did. There was a broker.
Yeah.
And I just sat there with my jaw open because really, a little bit of praise for you guys.
Yeah.
From what I heard this morning and what I'm seeing here.
Yeah.
We're getting a really good deal.
Yeah, well, that's wonderful to hear and we appreciate that. We do, we write a lot of property insurance. So, we're having a lot of conversations, tough, really tough conversations because as when you run a business, you're dealing with more expenses across the board. And people don't want to work. You have to pay more to come to work and all the things. So, I appreciate, appreciate that very much. We did include a copy of the flood, just so you could see. We only have one, one building here that's even close to in the flood zone. So, it's included in your, your policy. The next page, this is just your list of all the buildings that are, all the buildings that we have on the policy and the value at which they're insured. So, we went through with the team to verify all of that this year. The team did a ton of work last year to shore up everything. We had equipment here, outdated stuff, overvalued things. So, Steve and Dr. Laura and the team did a lot of work to straighten that out, which really makes us have a nice, much nicer, better-priced package. So. The property features and benefits, we don't have to run through all of these. If there are any that you have questions on, just know the carriers that, that write this kind of property throw in all the bells and whistles. So, things that you would expect to be covered, we'll just highlight a couple of things. Ordinance or law, that coverage applies when you have damage to a building and when you go to rebuild it, the laws have changed and you have to change the construction type, which can be more expensive and all those things. That's really important for a district like ours that has some older buildings and a wide range of age there. Any questions on any of those? I mean, they're all kind of standard. There's nothing really exceptional there. Okay, there's two lovely pages of that. So, when you can't sleep later, you can, you can take a look at those and call me and Lisa and ask us all the questions. Next is our inland marine. So, this is all of our equipment that floats from building to building. So, you think about band uniforms, athletic uniforms, mowers, tools for maintenance, all those things. That's what we've got here on your inland marine schedule. This is something else the team spent a lot of time on last year, just shoring up and making sure we had enough coverage, but not too much. So, any questions on that? Okay. All right, we're getting there. Next is your crime coverage. Again, this is all very standard. Employee theft, forgery alteration, robbery inside and outside, computer and funds transfer fraud of a hundred thousand, which we have more coverage for that on our cyber policy. So, that's crime. Pretty basic. And then, here we go. Here's Dale's favorite, the excess liability policy is next. We have a five million dollar excess policy. You'll see the note there, all the coverages over which this sits, which is your general liability, your educators' legal, employment practices, law enforcement liability, employer's liability, and your commercial auto. So, on each of those lines, you have another five million on top of the, on top of the one million on your auto and your three million on your general liability. Okay? Some questions on that? Am I losing you all? Did everybody have dinner or are you getting hungry? Oh, my God, you better believe it. You stop by any time. We can run through like a hundred of these. It'd be great.
It could be really exciting if you need it.
Yeah, that's very true. We had a lot of conversation about cyber last year. The cyber market continues to be challenged because people have nothing to do but sit around and figure out how to take your money and your things by virtue of breaking into your data. So, we were very fortunate this year. You continue to be with Chubb, who is the best carrier for this in the country. Their coverage is very, very solid. You have a limit of two million dollars there. We feel really good about everything, everything that you have on your cyber policy and the increase was very, very nominal. We were prepared last year for a two-hundred percent increase. I think we went up maybe thirty-five percent, something like that. This year, we went up four hundred dollars. So, we are very pleased with, with what we were able to come through on the cyber because we are not having that same experience with all of our, all of our commercial clients. Okay, questions? Okay, we're getting there. So, next is what everyone's been waiting for, all the excitement, which is our premium. So, you can see as you jump to the, we can just jump to the bottom line because that's where most of us are going to go. And you'll see that we have an overall premium increase this year of thirty percent, the bulk of that. So, as you look at the lines, and we don't have to go over each one, but Steve's done. He's done. He's done with it.
Good the Wi-Fi is right now.
Oh, it's probably the twister we were having out there. So, so as you can see, we've just done a comparison for you year over year there, showing you the premium change and then also what that percentage is. The biggest percentage of increase is going to be in your property and we knew that coming into it. We did, as I mentioned, go out to two additional carriers on the property. Every carrier chooses their own insurance to value limit. Trident Argonaut that we are with is the only carrier that would insure us for less than three hundred dollars a square foot. So, we are in at two hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot. So, we felt really good that that was a, that's a, an amount we could rebuild for. Three hundred feels crazy, but that's what Liberty's getting and they write probably forty percent of the district and the state and they are getting three hundred dollars a square foot on their insurance to value, which is just crazy. Again, we expected the liability lines to be significant and they weren't. Educators' legal liability went up just about seven percent, law enforcement just under nine percent. And the auto went up about nine percent, but that includes four additional vehicles that we didn't have on the schedule last year. So, year over year, you're, you're almost flat from a rate perspective. And again, taking up the deductibles really helped us on all of that. So. So, that's what we've got. It's not the best of news, but I can assure you that we did a lot of work. And again, we take a lot of pride in the ability to work with the district every year, the history that we have with you. And we're proud to be able to take care of you and just know we do, we do our best. And we'll, you know, go out again next year. We've taken on another market, monoline property that, because as you keep going north of two hundred, we get nervous that this carrier's going to, going to back out on us. So, we are always looking for that next market and just making sure that we have options for you moving forward.
My last question.
Yeah.
Okay, a tornado hits one of our buildings and destroys it. A total rebuild.
Yep.
Will we actually get that three hundred dollars per square foot if, if that's what it takes to rebuild?
Yeah, so, so you're insured at two hundred and forty-five dollars per square foot. It was the other carrier that wanted to, wanted us to be insured at three hundred. So, you would be insured at two hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot. And you would be insured to, so this schedule that we had with all the buildings listed, so it's back a few pages, but that's the limit that you're going to have for each individual building here. And this is reflecting two hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot for that building. And yes, that is replacement cost. It's a total rebuild. You're on a blanket basis. So, you have up to this two hundred and, what'd I say? Thank you. It's very small on my sheet because, and I'm getting very old. So, but you do have some wiggle room there too. But yeah, the, when we took a look at the values, we, two hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot, this seems very fair to be able to rebuild. You've got some wiggle room there. So.
Okay, because I, I just know that some of the schools that were destroyed, they couldn't afford to rebuild the school back to where it would hold a number of students. You know, because we, we have to have a certain number of square footage per student
Yep.
in a room in a building.
Yep.
Occupancy, you know?
Yeah.
And I, I just wanted to make sure. I didn't quite understand it. I'm sorry I missed the three hundred dollar.
No, it's okay.
But it, it, it's important that I think that, that we be able to rebuild square footage wise because if not, right now, I don't think. footage wise because if not, right now, I don't think that people are real anxious to have another bond levy or anything like that.
No, sure.
So.
Yeah.
And you know, you just said the tornado could have been here this evening, so.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a great, it's a great question and we are hearing those things because property was so underinsured in the past. I mean, five years ago, you could, we were probably at a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, if that. And not everybody is as militant, not every carrier is as militant about making sure that you're increasing that insurance to value. Now they are because you have all of these E and O claims on agents where you haven't increased the value and then they have a loss and your client's looking at you like, well, what about the rest of it, right? So the carriers now are, there's, there's no room for error anymore. We don't have any negotiating capability. We, if you want replacement cost, you go with the number that they say as a carrier, they define that number and you go with it or go to another carrier.
There was a big concern this morning when we were talking with, you know, for the company that a lot of insurance companies are going with, I'll just make these numbers up. You got a thirty thousand dollar roof replacement.
Yeah.
And a, and a roof, a thirty-year roof and it's twenty years old, well, we're only going to pay a third.
Sure, yeah.
Is that, are we looking at that?
No, you have full replacement cost on your roof. We see that a lot, we see that more often with personal lines carriers, also the, the big nationals like the State Farm, I'm not, don't anybody get mad at me, but with the State Farms, the All States, you really have to look at your policy real close because those, I mean, the roof is where the money is, right? And so most of those, unless you're paying extra, you really got to look at that because they are, they're going to throw it at actual cash value and to your point, you could get a third or a fifth, whatever.
Roof, you're not making them.
That's right.
You know, there's damage on the inside of that place too.
That's right.
That'd be looked at and everything.
Yeah, so no, it's a great question.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Corey's like, no, are we done?
I just, I just want to thank Lisa and Angie. They probably get tired of hearing from me like.
Never.
Every couple of weeks, especially when you get to January about.
Yeah.
What are the renewals, when are we going out to bid?
Yeah.
And I want to give a lot of credit to Debbie Bolger too, she does a great job. We really watched our inventory of what comes in, what goes out, making sure everything is up to date in the buildings. And we do scrutinize a lot, the contents in the building of, if, Dale, like you said, if something does happen, what really is the value in those buildings? And so that's why it's really important as we work with our administrators to make sure that we're up to date on furnitures, appliances, computers, all those things in there, so we get the value back for that. And then the other group that I really want to recognize is Andy Clayburn, the technology staff. To only have a four hundred dollar increase, last year when we went out to bid with Chubbs and they reviewed it, they were extremely impressed with the protocols that we have in place and policies that we have. And to give them credit and kudos to them, they really wanted to use that as a model for other districts to, to really break down and to look at what to do, so. We're very pleased with them and Lisa and Angie, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
When we look, when I talk with other business directors around the thirty percent for the properties, actually, and Angie, correct me if I'm wrong, it's probably one of the lowest in the state.
It's very low.
I know thirty, it's, it's, it's crazy, when we had talked earlier, I kind of budgeted with, with Justin, at least, at least a minimum of twenty-five percent with some, with some room in there if we had to, to make some adjustments, so.
Of course, you know, we have to follow the law as far as bidding and all that kind of stuff, but you know, obviously, we hope that we're staying in our community when we can, so that's, that's, that's big to us. The whole, the whole school board feels that way, so.
Well, we appreciate it, we're proud to be here. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you too very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Toadvine, before she starts elementary programming, I just wanted to mention, I forgot two churches, the Our Lady of Good Hope and the St. Henry's Catholic Church. I had given those certificates to Mr. Holman and so I didn't get to read those, so we want to recognize those two churches as well for helping our schools.
Blame it on Mr. Holman.
He's going to deliver the certificate, so that's, that's a big plus for me.
Okay, we'll move on to the elementary enrollment study update.
Thank you, Mr. Toadvine. All begin, but I have some committee members here as well, so they're happy to chime, chime in if they would like. Just on this first page, again, we've been providing the board an update, I think since April. And on the first page, just for those viewing from home or wanting to get on our website, we do have an elementary enrollment study page that you can get to from our website. I think it's under my superintendent's page tab, so you can kind of monitor, bless you, the minutes from each of our meetings, the board presentation, and any additional information that we have gained from data or any survey updates or information. So if you want to hop to the next page, Steve, that's just the, where are we at? The timeline, so just to kind of recap, we've met, started meeting in March. And so this month, even though school was on recess for summer, we had about twelve wonderful committee members. We had, of course, our bus driver because we took a district tour. So Keith did a great job driving us around. We had Tara Gordon, one of our assistants, and also one of our Teamsters rep, Mr. Holman, myself, Mrs. Dobson, Mrs. Neese, and you attended the tour with us and then Nyla, you met us at the, the restaurant afterwards. We had lunch out at, I think we were at Bullwinkle's, so that was fun. We had several teachers with us on the, the tour as well, so about twelve of us. And Mr. Holman was a great tour guide. He gave us some historical facts of the district and the routes and so it, it gave everyone an opportunity. We actually had a school secretary, Regina from Medler, who hadn't been to all the schools. So we went to every school. We also drove around to all of our new construction. So a lot of this presentation this evening is just, you know, monitoring the ongoing construction that will impact our enrollment numbers as we move forward. So that was the focus of our June meeting, so if you want to scroll a little bit more, Mr. Holman, let's see. After we had our tour, we talked about what everyone saw on the tour in terms of construction. We did approve a YMCA contract last month and we are expanding our programming to help some of our listening tour, town hall meetings. You know, if there is a change in programming, how could my child be better equipped if there's, you know, two students in a different building, if there's any grade banding or just the need for childcare? So last month, we are extending childcare for our preschool program, so there'll be extended day preschool because one of our preschool programs is only half-time. We also extended a ten-hour-a-week free YMCA care per staff member, per, per child. So if you have a staff member that needs maybe some before and after-school care, the YMCA and the great partnership, I think we're going to improve some donations from them this evening. So that has been a, a great step in that partnership and expanding services for our families who need that. And then no matter what happens during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we will have students in different schools, whether we choose to redistrict and just draw new boundary lines and have new neighborhoods go to new schools, or we look at some kind of sister school or buddy school. I'll share some historical information on that. Just talking about making the decision in December, a board recommendation that I would bring to the board for consideration. And then some spring planning, like a, a third quarter meeting where whatever, students are going to be moving to have some meet and greets and even for families so that they can develop some buddy families, that they can develop some relationships with and, and help any transition that has to happen. And we did share a district map, it's in the very infant stages. We're kind of keeping an eye on the construction to make sure any boundary changes we make can be kind of sustainable as we look at the growth and monitor that throughout the summer and the fall. And then another part of our enrollment study is how we're envisioning part of our strategic plan. We have a K to twelve vision of a Viking and how the academic focus, the social emotional focus, a, a community service piece align as we begin to look at shifting students and even possibly a grade banded scenario. So it was, it was a great lunch discussion. I don't know if any of the, I can keep going and if you want to interject, go right ahead. So if you want to click on, so you can go to the next page, Mr. Holman, the, just some specific, I want to give you a little data here. Aberdeen is one of our new construction developments and it has been ongoing since 2022, so it's been ongoing for quite a while. I have some data. It is right there off of, what, right next to Medler View is, is the best place to put it in perspective. And we, Mr. Holman and I stopped by there today. The development is almost complete. We talked to the sales office, there are six spec homes that are being built that are for sale and then are, there are only six lots that don't have any type of house on it so far. So the sales office said it's, she loves her job, it's very easy to sell these homes, it's, it's going very quickly. But how those homes, I think it was around a hundred and twenty that was proposed, I'm not sure the exact number, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five, but just this school year alone, that neighborhood produced thirty-eight students that are all Miami'sburg students, they're part of our transportation routes, obviously, for middle school or high school, they, we have a bus stop there. But our elementary had seventeen students and only two of those students are graduating, so we had two seniors from that whole development. So there will be at least thirty-six more returning in the fall in addition to all of the, the new construction that has been going on. So unbelievable, I think when they opened, they were predicted to take three to five years. So I, I think they're on track for about eighteen months. So we've been watching that, but we have, there's some definite data there. And then the next one is Rivendell Heights and this is part of the Chamberlain Farms development off of 741, if you're up near Bauer or Cox Arboretum. And they, the first picture on that side, that is their model home, it is open, they have a sales office, they have hours, and they have sold fifteen lots already. So there's eighty-one projected and if you drive up there, one of the streets is completely open and there's for sale signs for every lot and there are fifteen we checked today that have been sold. And then, of course, they have a model home that is there. And that entrance is off of Vienna Park, so you can have to go back a little bit. So we'll be monitoring that, just for all of us to know here and also anyone who watches the board meeting, if you have a purchase agreement with a home in Miami'sburg, then you can enroll your students. So as we, we kind of shared the data from Aberdeen and how many students that produced, we will be watching that when any of those students enroll at, whether it's Bauer currently for that attendance area and the middle school or the high school. So another piece of Chamberlain, Mr. Holman, if you want to move on, is MI Homes. And this is a picture of the actual model that is there on site. If you, you can access MI Homes, you just drive straight off of 741, up a pretty like steep kind of roller coaster hill and then you, you land and there's this, it's a beautiful home. In addition to this home, there are six other homes in process, so we're not sure if they're models, if they're kind of spec homes, but there's a lot of construction up that way. And if you click on the next slide, you can see on their website, this is a whole plot of, of Chamberlain and it shows you in orange all of the homes, I believe, that are active in the first phase and are, they have, you know, plot, at each lot, there is a, an identifying lot number, which I believe means that they will be selling. So this is a hundred and twenty homes projected in addition to the eighty that I shared for Rivendell. And then there's one other piece of the project up there and it's called Redwood and it has a hundred and forty-two, a hundred and forty-one units. These are large apartments, they're twelve hundred, fifteen hundred square foot, depending on the, the different model, maybe that they choose to build or offer. I spoke to someone today that they are already leasing and they already have several of these leased. So I mean, I haven't seen any contracts, but they haven't even started building yet, but they put in beautiful concrete roads and sidewalks, so we'll be, but they are constantly clearing land, so we're just, we haven't been able to talk to anyone from Redwood at this point. So these are, of these units, were over two hundred and fifty that would impact Bauer Elementary Enrollment Area. And even if we redistrict, that would, those would all still go to Bauer. They are just so close, literally right across the street within probably not even a quarter of a mile, half a mile from Bauer. So we will have to definitely take that into consideration as we look into some enrollment boundary changes. And then another area is on the opposite side of the district. If you go across the river to our west is Patriot Place and our bus tour did take us there. And I can remember six weeks ago that there was trees and wooded area and now it is completely excavated. So we're not sure when there'll be roads going in, again, we'll just be watching that. But it is a two hundred homes proposed, so that is definitely in process. An area that has stalled, if you want to share this, Mr. Holman, is Deer Park. It is not far from Aberdeen, so we are going to be watching that off of Benner since that now, based on the sales office there at Fisher Homes, they, they're down to six open lots. I'm not sure how quickly, this is supposed to be a Ryan Home Development, so I haven't heard anything further on if any development or a timeline. But it has been proposed with the city of a hundred and eighty-six homes. And then we talked a little bit about Redwood Apartments. Austin Commons is located right across from Austin Landing and it has forty-seven units and they are predicting a open for like residents in the fall. So there's one, two, three-bedroom apartments, they are affordable, some of them are affordable apartments, so we could anticipate an increase and that would be in the Jane Chance enrollment area right now. And there's forty-seven units, so we are watching that one as well. And then, and we're not going to have an, an enrollment study meeting in July, going to get everyone their vacation time. And then, but in the fall, our priority will be looking at where our kindergarten numbers are because that is where we are starting to see, obviously, enrollment pockets and hopefully some growth from all of the new construction. And then looking at all the other areas in terms of elementary enrollment and looking at that draft map and kind of putting numbers to the amount of students in each of those grades. And if we did start making some shifts, what that would look like in terms of seven K-five buildings or possibly, we have started discussing keeping all seven buildings some type of neighborhood school, so we've been looking at the possibility of maybe K-one and two buildings and maybe four of our attendance areas and then three, four and five and three of our other attendance areas. So no matter what neighborhood you live in, you're going to encounter part of your elementary career in that building and then possibly partner with another school that's close by in an attendance area. What's interesting is I went, I shared this with the committee at our luncheon, was as, as the school year ends, we have to look at our files, we have to clean things out, we have to make sure that we're filing our records retention, as we talked about earlier this evening in our first meeting. And so it's just interesting to do a little historical data. We came across a memo that was dated almost twenty years ago in December of twenty, two thousand and four. And the contents of the memo talked about overcrowding options. And it talked about the, the bubbles and pockets of enrollment that they were seeing throughout the district. And one of the options that they talked about in their brainstorming sessions was to look at creating buddy buildings by combining two attendance areas and share students. And they talked about maybe bringing Mark Twain and Bear together in this example and combining students. They even talked about taking all seven buildings, at that time, I think there were six, and creating a standalone kindergarten, a standalone fifth grade, two buildings serving first and second, and two buildings serving third and fourth. So I think, and we did come across it when Jane Chance opened again, I think in around two thousand and ten, and then Kinder had reopened because of the, so we have had some historical discussions as recent as the last twenty years where we've tried to look at the best way to serve our elementary population. So we're continuing to study and in the fall, in addition to looking at our enrollments, we are going to review some academic data from schools that have grade banded and especially the grade bands. We mentioned the K-one, two model, three, four, five, just to see how they compare academically, maybe with certain specialized programs, especially with our young learners and the, that early literacy piece. So we won't have an enrollment study update in July, but if I do have a construction update, I do plan to share that as well. This is on our website, so please, you know, if folks are interested and want to not read about liability coverage, as Angie mentioned, we're trying to keep everyone up to date on the data that we're collecting to make the best decision for our students moving to make the best decision for our students moving forward. So I'm not going to talk anymore, but Steve was on the tour, Ann and Nyla were on the tour. And so if anyone has any questions, I'll let them answer. How's that sound?
What's the, what's the number? Do we have any increased number with the construction? Have we seen any increases right now?
You mean enrollment?
Enrollment.
We, we will not know that until August. That's why I said in August, we're going to do that. All of our elementary buildings are, are closed for the summer. So Mrs. Lawson is taking new enrollments. So we won't look at that closely until August. Because a lot of times, if you have new enrollments, you also have families that move. So we want to make sure that we can't have finalized numbers when August 15th rolls around and our students are actually all in attendance.
And then the Aberdeen, 38 students. Those were new to the district students, not new from a different school moving to that area and just new to.
We don't know. They're just, these are the amount of students now living in Aberdeen.
Okay.
I mean, we can find that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then at some point, will there be a, possibly a money number to what we pay now in busing? Maybe what busing would cost when we do maybe do some redistricting or whatever that would cost? Are we going to have a now number and maybe an estimated number?
Well, I mean, we have, we have transportation costs now. And so basically, if, if anything had to change in terms of routes or additional routes or time of routes, we, we will have that once route picks are assigned. But again, in the fall, it would just be a projection because it would be moving forward for the next year.
Michelle can run some simulations of where boundaries would be for any redistricting or buddy schools, things like that. And then what we can do off of that, we can base it off of, let's say, the highest paid driver who could pick that route. That way you kind of get, I'd say the worst case scenario, but it gives you the worst case scenario.
Yeah. I think a side by side would be good to see.
Yeah, I think it's important to, to realize that there'll be, depending on what's chosen, there'll be other areas that will, that even if it goes up a little bit for transportation, there's other areas that's going to save a lot of money.
I'd like to see those numbers too.
Yeah, it's in the future, just because you have balance. Things think things will be balanced and that way we're not looking at building a new building. And that, that's big money, trust me. We've been there, haven't we, Joe? Three times. Okay. We okay?
Yep.
Anybody questions anymore? Those are good questions. Is recommended that the Board of Education approve the meeting opening items A through G. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of meeting opening items A, Alpha through G golf.
I second it.
First, Mr. Amsler, second from Mrs. Neese. Roll call, please.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Okay, and those items have passed. Moving on to the consent agenda items A through G. Item A is recommended that the Board of Education approve the overnight extended student trips. Tim Freeze, MHS Media Arts II, Stephen May, New York City. These are all together. I'll just read all the names first. Tim Freeze, Stephen May, Jenny Rocker, Tiffany Freeze, Paula Morningstar, and Vanessa Walters for trip, MH Media's Art II trip to New York City, New York on April 28th through May 2nd of 2024. Want to discuss that at all?
I think this is just something they do every year. It's their annual trip. And I think they like to get a board approved so the students can start the planning and the group. And if there's fundraising that they do, they have plenty of time to do that.
And they can set up stuff that doesn't know how much it's going to cost.
Yes.
Get it early. Okay. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the out of state travel. I just went through that. Item C, you have the approval of resolution. And it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution as presented, Mrs. Miami'sburg Resolution of Urgent Necessity.
So this is one where we talked about in Ohio Revised Code and what auditors are interpreting as what is a school building. And part of it, some classified school building is a place where academic instruction takes place, such as classrooms, gymnasiums, things like that. And so there was recent audit where a school district had put a press box on and the auditor saying, well, no, that's really considered a school building. And they're arguing back and forth, well, that's not a school building because it defines school building as academic. And so now auditors are taking a more substantial thing of a school building is now any building on school property, whether or not. So this resolution goes back to when they're putting on the storage pole barn at Holland to say the board will go ahead and waive the bidding, understanding for that, we can move forward with the project. So it's a way for us to, we have everything in line. So if they would come back and say, you know, depending which auditor, now we can just say the board has approved to waive that, so.
So Steve, I guess a good way of putting that is any, anything that's used for or by the students at facility is now considered.
Yep, that's what legal is saying now, just period in, any renovations, whatever, you just consider it a building, so.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to talk about item D too, I am?
Sure, go ahead.
Going through. So we're approving a facility labor fees. We're updating that. That'll be based upon new wages coming in with the new fiscal year for our staff that run those events. And also we have upped the labor portion of that because what's happening is most of our events that are classified members are working, they're going into overtime. So we need to make sure that we recoup that overtime, plus the time it takes to prepare and calculate all those things. So we're going to a flat rate. So right now, when people rent the facility right away, they know the exact rate instead of waiting to figure out which employee worked which one, were they in overtime? That whole thing. So it's a flat rate in terms of that now.
And it's amazing how many facilities that the school has that the community wants to use. It's a long list.
Yeah, it's a long list. And Jason Shade does a great job. We all work together with that, but he has a great job managing that. It, it's a process. So we've, we've, you know, last year, we, or almost two years now, we've gone all electronic with that to do that with SC view.
Questions? Okay, item E, approval of tuition free senior enrollment. Is recommended by the superintendent and the high school principal that the Board of Education approves Kate Nellerick for tuition free enrollment for this, for his senior year. This permission is only granted to a 12th grade student who previously attended Miami'sburg High School as a resident pupil during their 11th grade year. Any comments? Pretty much says, pretty much explains itself, doesn't it? Item F, is the approval of instructional materials adoptions. Is recommended that the Board of Education approve the use and purchase of the following educational instructional materials. Approval of adoption of curriculum instructional materials for AP African American Studies. Also the approval of adoption of curriculum instructional materials.
I think Mrs. Laura, our secondary curriculum director, shared this info with all of the board members as well. We currently offer general African American Studies and this is the AP version of that so that students can get potential college credit post-secondary.
And there's, right now, there's 20 students, I think. Is that correct?
Correct, already enrolled for the fall.
They're expecting maybe a few more to line up too. People moving in, I guess, would I say?
Right, or they have to change their schedule.
Yeah.
I have a question. Is this included in the college credit plus plan?
Well, CCIP is when you take a Sinclair course to get that. So the AP is part of our students' graduation plan, but it's really, it's taught by one of our, our teachers versus a CCIP usually instructors taught by a Sinclair teacher. We have a few that do both, like a dual teacher.
And you might be doing college credit plus and basically even taking an AP course. Yes, it gets confusing now done with everything going on. But it's good. It's good for our kids. It really is. So that's, that's all we got to look at. Okay. Item G, it's approval of the National School Breakfast Lunch Snacks and Beverages Program. Is recommended that the Miami'sburg Board of Education approve the National School Breakfast Lunch Snacks and Beverages Program.
So this is a yearly thing we have to do prior to the start of each school year in order to receive, to be part of the co-op purchasing program, to get certain prices in for students to participate in free and reduced lunch program.
Thank you.
And then item H, underneath it is the approval of lunch prices. And those lunch prices are remaining the same. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we had to raise our rates. It was a little crazy where we were able to still maintain, still maintain in the black and keep our prices low for our families. But in order to participate in the program, we had to raise them to federal minimums on there. So we met that a couple of years ago and we're happy to say that we don't need to increase for next year.
Okay, and for people that might be listening, I'm going to go ahead and read this. Is recommended that the Board of Education establish lunch prices for the 2022, I'm sorry, 2023, 2024 school year as follows. Elementary breakfast is $1.30, lunch is $2.50, milk is $0.60. Middle school is $1.60 for breakfast, lunch is $2.85, and milk is $0.60. For the high school, breakfast is $1.70, lunch is $3.05, and milk is $0.60. For an adult, breakfast is $1.75, lunch is $4.15, and milk is $0.60. And I must say that for the amount of food and everything that goes into that amount of money, it's pretty doggone good deal still, you know? With the way the prices are going up, and you walk in the grocery store and you're, are you kidding me? You know, 30%, 40% for almost everything you look at. Item I, approval of extracurricular conduct, extracurricular code of conduct and athletic fan code of conduct. Is recommended by the superintendent and the high school principal that the Board of Education approve the extracurricular code of conduct and the athletic fan code of conduct as presented.
Well, this is just something that we do every year as part of our high school athletic association to, because we are part of not only the Ohio, but our GWOC. So it's just something we approve and have updated every single year. So they'll get it ready for any online, because they don't really print programs anymore, and have that ready for August.
Okay, and there are absolutely no places to buy tickets now. If you handing over the money out of your pocket now for next year, will, will somebody be able to come and buy a ticket somewhere if they don't?
Yes, we, we, we will still accept cash at some of the gates. Some of the GWOC's schools or almost all the GWOC schools, they won't take cash anywhere. We still have the ticket booth available for, for residents that would still like to pay with cash in terms of that. And they can always reach out to Jason or Jason Two or Riva and the athletic office to, to get those tickets ahead of time and to make those accommodations. So they, they do a really good job. And we know a lot of our, our residents still want to come to the games, but don't use credit cards. So we'll, we'll work with them and make sure they can get there, so.
Yeah, that, that was, I, I'll put it plainly, I had plenty of hell raised with me by some older people in the community that, you know, likes to go to the ballgames and stuff. And you know what I'm talking about, Steve? I'm sure you talked to some of them too.
Yeah, we, we've always been able to work with them. That, that line might be a little bit longer, but they try to, they try to accommodate. And we know certain families that just want to pay each week. So they'll make arrangements for them to come in ahead of time and, and purchase the ticket. So we, we really do try to be accommodating to them, so.
Some of the way games are not as accommodating as we are.
Correct.
At all, I mean, it's like, whoa, you know?
No, that's good. I actually think there, there's a House bill that is going through legislation about mandating still having to take cash.
Good, thank you for, yeah, I'll put that in. Because I, I think that it's kind of pitiful when you have an 86-year-old guy that's goes to the football game, never missed any for 50 years. And he says, I can't go anymore because I don't, I don't have a phone, I don't know how to use it. I don't, you know, I don't use a card.
Yeah, and like I said, we, we've always worked with them and.
We have.
You know?
But you, you just said that other places haven't grown up yet, so. Okay. Item J, approval of consent agendas A through I. Is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda A through I. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
Okay, so we have first from Mrs. Gettler, second from Mr. Daffler. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Okay, and those items have passed. We'll move on to the Human Resources Agenda Items A through C. A is the approval of personal reports certificated and classified. I'm going to read this once, and it will be for items A and B. Employment in the Miami'sburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and an FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with the adopted board policies. Mr. Homan, you want to chime in on this one?
It is just a season of resignations, retirements, hiring, transfers and all that. So both this month and next month, you'll see a lot of movement of personnel, changes of personnel as positions open and people want to move to different spots. So summer business as usual.
And this is for both certificated and classified?
That is correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry, we got to go to C. The approval of employment of.
No, no, you, you.
No, it's A and B.
You have to approve A and B and administrative contracts are separate.
The supplement.
So, yeah.
Okay, yes, you're right. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So let's go to A. And roll call.
We're going to have a motion. We're going to do A and B. I think they broke it apart in case anyone wanted to abstain, do that maybe.
All right, well, let's, let's do it this way then. Do I have a motion for A?
I move for the approval of personnel reports certificated and classified.
I second it.
Okay, sorry for the confusion, folks. Mr. Amsler, first, second, Mrs. Neese. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Item A is passed. Item B. May I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the supplemental stipend certificated, classified, that we approve, the Board of Education approve the supplemental stipend certificated, classified.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Is that you, Mr. Daffler?
Yep.
So we had a first, Mrs. Neese, second, Mr. Daffler.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, so item B is passed. We move on to item C. Item C is the approval of employment of administrator, high school assistant principal. Is recommended by the superintendent that Tara Spears is awarded a two-year, 220-day administrative contract with the Miami'sburg City Schools, effective August 1st of 2023 through July 31st of 2025. Tara Spears will assume the role of Miami'sburg High School Assistant Principal on the administrative salary schedule. And look at the file GE. And look at the file G E B R one. Any questions? Comments?
Um, we just, um, wanna thank Mr. Black and his staff. Um, we put together an extensive interview committee, um, mister, there were some screenings and then Mr. Black put together, um, an, an interview committee of students and teachers and also a committee of student, I mean, teachers, administrators and candidates. And so it was a great process and, um, our students did a wonderful job. And, um, it was just a, a great process to see our student voice come out in, in that process. And, um, we're really excited about having Mrs. Spears. Um, she's done a lot of, um, education in the area specifically, specifically at Northmont. So, um, it's great, um, to have her on the staff and we're looking forward to working with her.
I love that students were involved. It's so nice.
I think Mr. Homan was with them and he, he said they, they really did a nice job.
They had a lot of very good questions and they, um, brought up a lot of concerns. They, they saw at the high school and how would the candidates address those issues and what were their thoughts and feelings about it, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, uh, roll call please. Oh, I mean, I need a motion. I have a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the hiring of Tara Spears, a two-year, two-hundred-and-twenty-day administrative contract with the Myersburg City Schools effective August first, twenty twenty-three through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Second?
Second?
First from Mrs. Getter, second from Mr. Daffler. Roll call.
Mr. Amler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to agreements and contracts. Uh, there are items A through L. Item A, approval to participate in the EPC bus bid process. Myersburg City School District Board of Education wishes to participate and authorizes the Southwestern Ohio Ed- Educational Purchasing Council to advertise and receive bids on said board's behalf as per specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of school buses. Mr. Homan?
So, um, one of the requirements the state of Ohio to bid is to bid the purchasing of school buses. And so, um, we participate in the bidding process with the EPC, the Educational Purchasing Co-op, who we will kinda talk about in the next item that we get our health, dental, vision, um, and life insurance from as well. Um, they go out and seek the bids, um, from the state for us, from like Cardinal for Bluebird, Rush for International Buses, um, all of those, and it's very competitive bidding and pricing, so they kinda do all the legwork for us. Um, and then since they're through the consortium, then we can use their items to do the bidding process. They do a, a very good job, um, in terms of that, but just like with everything, the purchasing of, of buses is, is gone up a lot, so. But in order for us to participate in that process, um, the board has to pass, decide on for us to be able to, uh, proceed with the EPC. And there's no obligation that we have to purchase buses from them. Um, we at least have it so as we come through and we need to, then we can.
Mr. Homan, just, do you have any idea, I mean, just an idea about with the consortium way that it is, approximately how many buses like per year that might be purchased with everybody together?
Oh, my gosh. I can find that out. There's, there's a list that they put together, but I mean, we're talking hundreds of buses.
That's all I wanted people to know, is that when you're buying hundreds, you get them cheaper than if you're buying four.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because this is a group purchasing organization and that enables us to get the lowest, best pricing because they're purchasing so, so many.
Correct.
Versus if we were just purchasing five or six, we would not get the same pricing as we are going to get when everyone's purchasing.
Right, so if we went out on our own and just bid them ourselves and went to Cardinal or to Rush, um, things like that, we wouldn't get as good as a price because they know that we're not gonna buy hundreds of buses, we're only gonna buy a couple of them, so.
Thank you. Okay, item B is the approval of medical insurance, dental insurance, life insurance and voluntary vision insurance for the twenty twenty-four school year. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following plans with the Southwest Educational Purchasing Council for medical insurance, dental insurance, life insurance and voluntary vision insurance for the twenty twenty-four school year. Uh, for the medical insurance, there are, um, three options. For the dental insurance, there's two options. Uh, for life insurance, bas- basically there's one, you just gotta be alive. Voluntary vision insurance, um... You want to say anything further?
Yep, so, um, once we ju- we just talked about the EPC, the purchasing co-op. So what we do, um, if you remember, we, um, started a relationship with Haran and Associates. Um, they're, they're an independent firm. They're not a broker. They get now commission off of selling insurance or anything. They're the honest broker. They go out, they look to see, they take a look at our claims and rates. They go out to see, um, if we're biddable out there in terms of that. They compare, um, our pa- our plan with the EPC to those that go out there. So, um, this year it has, um, been advantageous for us to continue in the EPC. Um, we have had some, um, pretty major, um, claims that have met the threshold, um, for that. And so, um, being part of a consortium for us this year, we are, we're benefiting greatly from it. Um, medical has, has increased in eight-point-five percent. Um, and that, that is eight-point-five percent. Um, we weren't the highest in the consortium, um, but based upon our claims, based upon Haran looking at things, we were pretty lucky to get an eight-point-five, um, in terms of that. Because of those major claims, if we went out to market on ourself, um, we were declining bids from UHC and Anthem. Um, and there was a third and I can't remember, but because of those high claims, they would not take us. We would become a liability based upon these large claims right now. But we look at that every year. Um, we do have a insurance committee in the district that meets, um, on a quarterly basis and it's made up, um, of, um, classified from Teamsters, MCTA members, um, administrators non-bargaining. And we talk about ways to, um, improve and to lower premiums, um, options that are out there, um, for that. And so, um, they've been very helpful, um, in that. Um, they were very helpful as we moved through negotiations with both groups to look at best options and best options for our employees. So, um, I, I would say, um, both bargaining units and the non-bargaining appreciate, um, Haran. Like I said, they're, they're the honest broker in there, um, and they will, they'll answer any and all questions, so. And typically, we don't even put these out here until October, um, but the EPC was working with everyone because there are a lot of districts up with negotiations this year, so they kinda needed this information, um, a lot sooner, so.
What was the increase last year? Do you remember? Was it twelve something?
It was twelve and, uh, the other high school here.
Twenty-eight, I think.
I know. Let me, I'll have to look that up and see.
I was thinking it was twelve something, but that's an improvement.
We were much lower than, we were way down on the bottom as far as...
Right, I, it, it was a double digit, but I'm not quite sure which double digit it was, so. So.
Seems like one year it was twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was one, it was twenty-eight last year. One of the people in the groups, yeah. Wow, okay, item C, uh, awarding of liability property and fleet insurance. It is recommended by the Superintendent Treasurer CFO and the Assistant Superintendent of Business Human Resources that the liability property and fleet insurance be awarded to Argonaut Insurance Company, our local agency, as masters and associates. I think we already have a pretty good presentation on that, but would you like to say anything else?
No, we, we really do try to scrutinize and especially the last couple of weeks, I've asked them on several occasions, can you go back and what if we kinda knock this down and increase the, to that? So we really do try to, our due diligence to make sure we're doing the right thing, so.
Yeah, yeah, because when you need it, you want it to be there, that's for sure. Uh, item D is the approval of agreement with Green County Educational Service Center. It is recommended by the superintendent and the director of student services to enter into an agreement with the Green County Educational Service Center. Dr. Blessing?
Sure, then, this agreement helps us with some of our special needs students, um, transition, um, from high school and to, they offer some services based on, um, the student's IEP and needs to help them transition. Um, we do that, we have services within our, our district as well, but sometimes we need, um, an out-of-district assistance just based on the type of student, so.
Thank you. Item E is the approval of agreement between the Hamilton County Educational Service Center and the Myersburg City Schools. Dr. Blessing?
Yes, this is for physical therapy services which are specialized and sometimes it is hard to find folks, especially in a school setting because, um, a clinical, um, or a hospital setting, as Nyla knows, it can, it can be a, a big difference in cost um, in terms of a salary for one of those specialized services. So we contract and, um, because not a lot of our students need those services as well. So sometimes it's, we don't necessarily need three or four whole people, but maybe partial services and this can help with that.
Thank you. Item F, the superintendent and treasurer CFO recommend approval of an agreement with, um, NWEA for MAP growth, uh, grade K through twelve. Do we have an explanation of MAP?
Sure, I mean, MAP is a formative diagnostic tool, so it's an assessment that we give our students. Um, most of our, um, schools give it in the fall and the winter and the spring, so we can evaluate and diagnose in the fall. We can predict, we can see growth, so it is kinda the opposite of our Ohio State test or our AP test or an ACT because those are more, uh, summative result, whereas our formative gives us ongoing, um, data to help our students. And it's a, a vendor and a contract we've used for several years.
They're also an approved vendor for OTEST because part of the OTEST two-point-O, you have to have a student growth component of it and they are an approved vendor, um, for them as well. So kinda get double for it, you know, in terms of that, but you have to have that. Um, and most districts do use NWEA because it's very easy data to look, um, especially as students go through, um, the MTSS process to see if they would need specialized education. That data is very easy for teams to look at, um, and to analyze as well.
Thank you.
And our insurance increase last year was seven percent. I looked back. For January of twenty-three, it said seven percent for our renewal plans.
And then dent- okay.
Dental was only one and a half.
One and a half.
Yeah.
Wow, we got a lot of healthy teeth.
Thanks, yeah.
Okay, um, item G. Approval of, uh, memorandum of understanding with Miami Township for Safety Town. Mr. Homan?
This is an agreement. Um, we have a little diagram on the, uh, the TV. The city of Dayton, um, had a safety town. It is just a small set of buildings that kinda look like a streetscape. So students, um, primary students such as preschool and kindergarten can learn how to use a bicycle or scooter safely and how to utilize crosswalks as they begin some, you know, we do have students who walk in our district. And so the city of Dayton donated this, um, Ron Hess, I'm gonna give him kudos because he kinda helped bring this to the, to Myersburg and to the township and then he retired. Um, but, so Chris Schneider and the district has been working on, um, obtaining some funds through our JED, um, cooperative. So the JED has approved a blacktop and a fence to put around. We have located a site at Jane Chance Elementary, which is also on the same campus as our preschool Maddox Lang. So, um, the JED approved, uh, all of the costs for the blacktop and the fencing. We are, of course, donating the land. Um, we have the donated, the, the township is gonna retain the, the, uh, village or the sheds, but they're gonna don- they're not gonna donate, we're just gonna keep them on our property. Um, and then our, um, actually building, construction class, trades class will help with some of the maintenance on those sheds for painting or maybe a replaced shingle or a small little window that they have in them. And then those sheds can store things in as well when the students do come and take part in safety village. And they have, um, volunteers, we work with our, um, local law enforcement, um, and also our fire district to, to help students learn about the importance of just pedestrian safety and, and their safety. So it's, we're exciting. It's gonna be between Jane Chance and, um, Maddox, uh, in the parking lot there where the circle drive is to the side. So I think we'll, we're gonna execute the quotes that we got and get started.
Yeah, because later on you'll see, um, in the same list here, there'll be a blacktop quote for Hauser. They'll do the blacktop and it'll be a quote, um, for Bellbrook Fence will put the fence on. So, um, because it's on our property, we have to approve it. We place the order, but then the bill gets sent to the JED for them to pay, to pay it. I think it's called like Miami Crossing is who will cut the check for that, but we have to approve since it's on our property. And then also in donations, you'll see at the end that we accept the donations of the blacktop and the fencing, um, as well.
I think if I'm correct, the bike top alone was like eighty-six thousand or something like that.
No, that, that was the middle school. I think this one's like thirty-nine thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. So when you're looking at that drawing there, the schematic, is the, I, I know what you said there, but if, if I'm looking at it, where, where exactly is it now?
Oh, you mean when we place it at Jane Chance? Um, if, there's a little path along the backside of Jane Chance that goes, connects to Crane Run, Crane's Run. And so it's just a little north of there. We have a flat area. Um, there's, there isn't a pond there anymore. It's just kind of a water retention area and it's, it's just a flat area. Students will be able to see it out the windows, um, on that, back by the gymnasium part of Jane Chance.
Good. Yeah, I love that little walkway back there. Um, okay.
Steve, will we put on a camera back there?
Yeah.
We're gonna run electric then?
Yeah, we'll do all that in-house. It'll do all that in-house therefore.
And this is a no charge to the district?
No, not for the blacktop or the fence.
Yeah, that's for the blacktop and the fence.
We'll add the camera and we're on the electric ourselves, but we just do that in, in-house.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, item H is approval of the agreement with Bradley Payne Advisors. The superintendent and treasurer recommend approval of an agreement with Bradley Payne Advisors as presented. What do you say, treasurer?
Uh, we work with Bradley Payne to help us with the capital planning. And so this is just kind of renewing that contract and updating it so that they'll continue to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a very nominal fee he does and we actually met with him yesterday or Tuesday.
And so he's, I do work with him.
Yeah, and I know Justin's worked with him before, but, um, it's Dan Shaw with Bradley Payne. And what he does, um, is we kinda talk about all this, these, our capital improvement plan, is he goes out and he kinda works the background too to know, okay, we're gonna replace like two buses this year. We give him all the information of, here's the blacktopping that needs to occur, here's the assessments. We get the assessments from vendors of what needs to be milled. Like for example, the, the middle school that went out, he worked on that to know what needed to be milled, um, in terms of that. But he does all, he looks at all the roofings, um, that's out there from the assessments, the blacktop, the buses, um, athletics, um, all that. And, and he's very good and very knowledgeable to know, okay, well, we know X, Y and Z's coming up. Let's go ahead and kind of piggyback a couple of these together. Let's break these off together. He's, he's been a treasurer and advisor for, for many years and he's very knowledgeable.
The man.
Do what?
I said Dan Shaw's the man.
Yeah, he, he's very knowledgeable and, um, he's very friendly. He's very helpful, um, in terms of that.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's good to know. Uh, item J is recommended by the superintendent and assistant superintendent to the Board of Education approve an agreement with Bellbrook Fence as presented. Item K, it is recommended by the superintendent and assistant superintendent that the Board of Education approve an agreement extension of forty-two months with Pitney Bowes for the mail machine as presented. Tell us about that dinosaur.
So the, the mail machine that used to be used a lot, um, is, is not used as much, obviously now with, with all the social media, email, things like that. And so, um, our lease was up, um, and we'd had to get a new, a new machine. A new machine, um, a couple of years... And so our lease was up and we had to get a new machine, a new machine a couple of years ago. But as we explored, you know, they always come out and try to sell you some new machines or things that. And basically we just said, look, I just want to keep the same machine, it's new, we haven't had problems with it. What can you do to give us an extension? So they went back and they were able to give us forty-two months, no increase at all. So I was, I was very pleased with that, so.
That's good. Good, like it. Okay. Item L is the approval of agreements and contracts items A through K. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval agreements and contracts items A through K.
Second. We have first for Mr. Daffler, a second for Mr. Ampler. Any further questions? Roll call.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Ampler?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to the financial agenda items. Items A, approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-four eighteen and two hundred fund budget and purpose statements. That's a hard one to follow. Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the F Y twenty-four O one eight and two zero zero budget and purposes statements as presented.
And this was just a compliance thing that changed last year where you have to get board approval before you budget the O eighteen and two hundred funds, which are building specific.
Okay. Item B is approval of advances for fiscal year twenty-three and return of advances for fiscal year twenty-four. The treasurer CFO recommends that the Board of Education approve the following advances for fiscal year twenty-three. Advances are required in order to eliminate fund balance deficits at fiscal year end in accordance with the higher revised code. All amounts will be returned to the zero zero one fund in fiscal year twenty-four.
So this is referring to grant funds where we haven't received the money yet that's been budgeted. And so once that money comes in, then what we do is we return the funds. This is pretty common practice, I think every year you'll have some grants where we put in to receive the funds each month. And because of the fiscal year closing at the end of June, you might not receive the money until like the first, second week of July. And so you have to advance because you can't close out the fiscal year with negative accounts.
Okay. You understand that, Mrs. Getter?
I do.
I figured you did, being the business lady you are. Okay. Item C. The treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following transfers. These transfer are for fees waived during April through June of twenty twenty-three. All transfers are made in accordance with the higher revised code.
This has been pretty common practice periodically to do this.
Item D. The approval of use of treasurer other dues, fees, funds for professional development. It's recommended that the Board of Education approves the use of zero zero one dash two five one zero dash eight four nine funds described as treasurer other dues and fees for treasurer professional development through U D M E online courses.
So this is money that's been set aside as part of my contract for professional development and this would just allow me to use it for specific courses through this U D M E online.
Okay, can can you give an example of why you might need these courses?
Uh, well, dealing with the big data sets that we have coming in, a lot of times I'm kind of relying on software that we use, such as the Forecast Five. And this would kind of help me make more sense of what's going into that. And then as more information comes in, some of these courses would just help me develop a system to kind of, I guess, put it all together and then be able to draw conclusions from it that I can then present to you all and be more knowledgeable about what I'm presenting.
Yeah, well, thank you, I, that's good, because we get really confused sometimes. I know I do. Okay, so item D, item E. It is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the fiscal year twenty twenty-three appropriations as certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. The Board of Education authorizes the treasurer CFO to make adjustments that would occur in fiscal year twenty twenty-three prior to descending to the county auditor. Any such changes will be reported to the Board of Education at the July twenty twenty-three regular board meeting of education. Okay.
Yep, so each month I'm, I bring this to you all because any changes that are made throughout the month before we spend any money or appropriate any money, it has to be approved by you all. So those changes are made, I continuously bring those to you so that you can approve them and then we can spend the money.
Okay, thank you. It is recommended that the school board approval of the financial items A through E. Might have a motion?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve financial items A through E.
I second it.
Okay, we had Mrs. Getter for first, Mrs. Nice for second. Roll call.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Ampler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Okay, that's passed. Acceptance of donations, item section seven. It's recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's O one eight account unless indicated otherwise. Two hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-eight cents from the parents of class of twenty twenty-three graduates to the class of twenty twenty-four students with outstanding lunch balances. That's very nice. Asphalt and fencing valued at approximately fifty-three thousand dollars from Miami Crossing Joint Economic Development District for Safety Town at Jane Chance Elementary School. Four walk behind, four scrubbers and five backpack vacuums valued at twenty-nine thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and nineteen cents from the YMCA due to, due to the Miami'sburg School District. Elementary decodable reader classroom libraries valued at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the YMCA to the Miami'sburg City School District. One hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand canisters of sanitizing alcohol wipes valued at eleven thousand nine hundred ninety dollars from Michael Hahn to the Miami'sburg School District. Viking Valhalla donations through Miami'sburg City Schools employee payroll deduction. Amount indicated is a total of three-year pledge unless otherwise indicated. Thousand eighty dollars from Dr. Laura Blessing. Seven hundred and twenty dollars two-year pledge from Mrs. Brenda Hipper and her husband. Three hundred and sixty dollars from Nicole Meyer. One thousand eighty dollars from Jason Osborne and one thousand eight hundred dollars from Jason Shade. Do I have a motion?
I move to accept the list of donations.
Second.
We have first for Mrs. Nice, second from Mr. Daffler.
Ampler.
Ampler? Go ahead, I know you want to say something, a donation.
Thank you.
Yes, we appreciate it.
That's pretty much a spot down there. That, you know, there's some pretty high, high dollar items on here, you know, that, that's a, that's a huge savings to the school district, huge.
So in in terms of the YMCA grant money, we, the floor scrubbers, the backpacks, the decodable readers. So the YMCA was able to provide grant money that they needed, that they needed to spend on schools within districts they they service our our students in. And so the four, specific money just where the buildings are, we could only use those money in those in those buildings. And I do believe Laura correctly, but it is Mound, Motherview, Bauer. Mound, Motherview, Bauer.
Jane Chance.
Jane Chance. For those, so you'll see like four floor scrubbers, one will go to each of those buildings. Backpacks and then decodable readers will be divided among those four buildings, so. We're, we're very grateful to them. I mean, it's, there's some very, very high priced values there. And then also to Michael Hahn for the canisters. So we, we go through quite a bit of sanitizing wipes each year throughout the the district for various things and and we spend money on those because obviously we need to sanitize and do things, we're very, very grateful for them to do that, so.
Okay, Steve, you want to give a little shout out to the Viking Valhalla, what it is?
Or, oh, Lord, do Viking Valhalla, she's been working with that, so.
Sure, um, this is kind of a continuation of our Campus Quest kind of initiative that started when we built Holland Field. And so during that time we had Campus Quest and we asked for donations to help build our facilities there. And obviously there's upkeep, there's ongoing costs, any, you know, debt that occurred when we finalized that building. But then there's also a phase two that the committee had prior to my attending in terms of expansion of our athletic fields and upkeep. And so, you know, I think a lot of folks kind of affiliate Campus Quest with building Holland Field. Now that we have Holland Field, we need to maintain it, we need, we want to expand. I mean, there's kind of a phase two plan. And so we launched the Viking Valhalla, so it's kind of a new and fresh initiative in the district to keep those, those wonderful supporters going. But also a lot of our staff take part and took part in the Campus Quest payroll deduction where they signed up for a three-year to give to the Campus Quest initiative. So those three years end tomorrow, June thirtieth. So we wanted to, we worked with Jason Shade and Jason Osborne and our marketing folks to help us kind of rebrand that initiative. And we wanted to make sure folks that were, wanted to continue to provide some funds to the district that they could continue to do so. So I think you'll see, we are going to kick it off at our back to school staff day as well. So I do anticipate people have inquired, Mrs. Hipper, kudos to her, some of our folks that have already been Campus Quest donors. We're going to get some really cool Viking Valhalla stickers. But anyone who signs up to continue to support with a financial donation will get a Viking Valhalla T-shirt. So just to kind of get that, that new program out there and and just make the community aware, so.
That's cool. I like it. Okay. The eighteen hundred on Jason Shade, is that a correct number or is that a typo?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Ampler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Okay, it's passed, thank you for the donations. And next we're going to go to the section eight for information only. The appointment of board delegates to OSBA for the twenty twenty-three Fall Conference and for the other requested meetings. Board of Education appoints the following board members as the official delegate and official alternate to the OSBA delegates meeting at the twenty twenty-three OSBA Capital Conference and other such meetings as may be requested of the position. All official delegates may speak and vote on all resolutions and other businesses. Do I have a, anyone that would like to nominate somebody for this position?
I nominate Del Toadvine.
I second.
Well, okay. And I would like to nominate Ann Nice for an auditor. Gotcha.
I second.
Okay, well, that item's taken care of. Nomination, let's get item B, nomination to the executive committee of the Southwest Region Highest School Boards Association for the various offices which will be elected. Would anybody like to take on that?
I nominate Chris Ampler.
Second.
Why me?
Why not you?
Why not?
Okay.
Is that okay, Chris?
Sure.
You know, you don't have to accept these nominations. I, I was that person. It was fun. Ticket and streaming prices. The Greater Western Ohio Conference, known as the GWAP, ticket prices for the twenty twenty-three twenty-four school year are as follows. There's no changes from last year except for the individual event, which is now fifteen dollars. But for a regular season varsity game, except for football, it's eight dollars. Varsity football is nine dollars. Varsity tournament is nine dollars. Middle school ninth and junior varsity, non varsity events are six dollars. Middle school and non varsity tournament, seven dollars. If you buy a monthly subscription for all events, it's fifty dollars. And an annual subscription, good for all events all year, is a hundred and fifty dollars. If you, obviously if you go to a lot of events, a hundred and fifty dollar one is a pretty good buy. Look at what there is there.
I think this is the streaming prices. If you want to sign up for the subscription, I think the sports passes are next.
Okay. Individual pass is one hundred dollars for all events, seven through twelve. Correct me if I'm wrong. Family pass is three hundred and fifty dollars per family, a family of four. There's no extra fees when purchasing individual passes electronically. However, there is a twenty-five dollar charge for each additional, additional family member. Okay, senior citizens. Senior citizens passes are good for home events and may be picked up at the athletic office for residents of Miami'sburg sixty and older. Proof of residency are required to pick them up. We can also transfer your senior pass to an electronic pass. Okay. Anyone want to add anything to that?
I just think Jason and Jason want to make sure that our, our sports passes aren't good for the the tournaments. They would still have to pay that additional cost.
Yeah, always been that way.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Joe Isaacovich is going to go first tonight because he's got to hit the road.
Yes, yes, thank you. Few students to recognize, here in Miami'sburg M D C T C STEM robotics class developed a sumo box or robots for an end of the year competition. Students Steph Garcia and Kendall, Kendall Goodrow took part in that. Also, under program highlights of early education, childhood education, Lily and Riddle from Miami'sburg is working at Fate, yes, Fate Early Learning Center in Miami'sburg. Also, I attended our- Uh, also, I attended our, uh, Youth Connections graduation. Basically, this was held on Friday, May twelfth. And I'm very proud to announce, uh, you know, the Youth Connections Program is very important to us. A lot of students that have problems, uh, going through the normal classroom atmosphere.
Steve. And, uh, thank you. And, uh, from Miami'sburg, we had Aleah Napier and also Aiden Freeman graduated, which we're very proud of them. Uh, also, I attended the Aspire, uh, GED and Adulta Diploma Program, which was held on, uh, Friday, June sixteenth. And we, uh, had approximately fifty graduates. Uh, let's see, also, uh, some upcoming events that I will be attending. Uh, let's see, August the tenth, Thursday, will be our Welcome Back for Teachers with breakfast provided. Friday, August eleventh is our Staff Recognition Luncheon, uh, with a buffet served. Uh, on Monday, August fourteenth, I will be attending the Breakfast at the Pond, sponsored by the Employees Association. That's always a nice get together to meet with everybody. And, uh, also on Monday, August fourteenth, what's the scoop? We'll have an ice cream truck there from one to three. Uh, also, we just had our retreat and looking at some, uh, statistics, um. Joe, do you mind if I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
Um, when you go through that stuff, if, if anything is available to the public, would you let us know? Yes, yes, I normally do that. Yeah, you do. Okay, yeah. Um, basically, we have over forty-two curriculum programs. And right now with multiple programs, or I should say classes, we have, uh, over fifty classes that we have. Now, obviously, we are very interested in the, the numbers of students that we have in each class. Uh, ultimately, we would like to have twenty to twenty-five is ideal. Um, twelve to nineteen is acceptable. And we do watch, and currently we don't have any, uh, anything in the, what we call the red, where we have to reassess whether we want to continue, uh, a program. Uh, we also have what we call service programs for students that benefit from, uh, uh, the program itself, uh, such as, uh, hospitality services. We have six students and retail ag services where we have seven students. And these are for students that I think need a little additional help. And because of that, we don't worry about the number of students, uh, in those classes. Uh, district enrollment, um, basically, at this time, uh, we are looking at a total enrollment of around fifty-six hundred. And that includes the campus and also our satellite programs. And just a point of note, uh, a date that we, we, uh, brought forward in two thousand and five, we had a total, considering campus and satellites, of around twenty-five hundred students. So our growth rate has been phenomenal. Also, the satellite enrollment, uh, has really grown. We are at, uh, uh, over thirty-five hundred students in the sta- satellite programs, including Miami'sburg. And back in two thousand and five, we had a little over five hundred. So again, we've really increased the satellite programs. And it's important to us, for instance, as an example, uh, we started, uh, working with Huber Heights on welding program, Hy-Vac program, uh, for themselves. But what this does, not only are we able to help the district out, but it also relieves pressure from our main campus for students that might be turned away for a welding class or Hy-Vac coming from a district that doesn't have the capability to have a satellite program. So we're seeing some really good things along those lines, too. Also, I think I stated last month that we had put in for a grant to actually add on to our new building. We were able to, uh, I think, really put forward a, a beautiful request to the state for grant monies. Uh, we were able to talk our, uh, architecture firm that we worked with on the new campus to come up with plans free of charge for us. So we had full plans that we were able to submit, uh, to the state for the grant program. So I, we're very hopeful that, that we're going to be able to get this and, uh, go from there. And I think, uh, that basically is all I've got this month. Any questions or comments?
So are all the satellites at high schools in?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if you had like a small building somewhere too that you had.
No, although we do work with, uh, the ESC out at Northridge, they have a building out there that we work with them on. But typically, our satellite programs are, are at the high schools, Miami'sburg, Valley View, uh, schools like that.
That's great.
Joe?
Yes.
When do you anticipate hearing about the grant?
Uh, we're hopeful in the next two months that we will hear. And then, uh, if we're successful, uh, you know, we have the construction crews there now. Hopefully, we can incorporate into the building at that time.
Great, nice.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Everybody have a great fourth, be safe.
You too. Go be with your family, sir.
Yes.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, Dr. Daffler?
Thank you, sir. Um, we are getting, I think, summer break here for, uh, the Ohio House and Senate. But last week, the House did not concur with the Senate's changes to House Bill thirty-three. So that's going to a conference committee. Um, and they will hash out their differences there and see if it can, uh, be brought to the floor. One other House activity that I'd like to bring up was, uh, House, uh, House Bill sixty-eight, which would prohibit certain procedures to alter minor child sex and would designate the act as Ohio Saving Adolescent for Experiment Act. The bill also included the House Bill six, what I brought up a couple of months ago, which would, uh, enact the Save Women Sports Act to require school, states, institutions, and higher education and private college to designate separate single-sex teams in sports for each sex by a vote, uh, of sixty-four to twenty-eight. It passed. I shouldn't have a, um, report for the next couple of months.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Daffler? Next, we'll go to the Student Achievement Liaison, Mr. Christopher Angler.
Nothing.
Nothing, honey?
Summer, summer break.
Okay. Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition Liaison, Mrs. Anne Nice?
Uh, this is our skip month. So we'll resume meetings in July.
Okay, thank you. And the district news and information from, uh, myself, there is none. No school in session, so that's, uh, good. Next, um, we went to the executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. In reality, it's to discuss the evaluation of the treasurer and the CFO. Do I have a motion?
I would have a question before I would have a motion.
Okay.
Um, because the executive session is in number ten and then you come back into eleven to comment. So usually how we've done it is we went into executive session, come out, and then adjourn. So, uh, those folks that want to leave, that are not going to be in executive session, you want to do the comments and then, or are we going to be in executive session long?
Well, we, you know, we could, when we go into executive session and we come back out of the executive session, then, you know, for the public comments, but we don't have any green sheets.
Okay.
So we don't have to worry about any public comments this evening. But that is something to think about in the future, Chris, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, we can scoot on with that one.
Green sheets are supposed to be turned in before the meeting?
Prior, yes. Yeah, we don't accept them, uh, you know, after, after we begin our meeting. Okay. So we're, we're, we're good there this evening. But thanks for pointing that out, Chris, that's, that's definitely a good point.
But we could, um, enter into executive session then at, um, twenty-twenty-one.
So, I, I really, we don't need to amend this or anything because.
No, it's fine.
So, uh, we do need a motion to move into executive session.
Yeah, I'll enter into executive session at twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, so that was a motion. And I have a second, please.
I second.
Okay, so, um, we have a first and, from Mr. Amsler, a second from Mr., uh, from, I'm sorry, from Mrs. Gettr. Roll call.
Mr. Tovine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettr?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Anyone that would like to be excused, we'd better, uh, to make a little run. Let's come, let's reconvene in, uh, three minutes, we'll be all right.